First Antoine Name et al, Santa Barbara County Superior Court, case number 23 CV05070. We will adjourn to closed session and return to open session at 6:30 PM. We will now reconvene, open session for the Lompoc City Council meeting for August 6th, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll? Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Present.
Councilmember Vega?
Here.
Mayor Protem Gilda Ayello?
Here.
Mayor Janelle Osborne?
Here.
Mr. Malavi, was there any reportable action from closed session?
Mayor, the city council met to discuss the one existing litigation item on the closed session agenda, but there was no reportable action.
Thank you. Please join me in the invocation with Pastor Nate Marsh as followed soon after with the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Well, God, we give thanks for this incredible community that we live in. It's hard to not be spoiled by the near-perfect weather, especially as we see our neighbors endure the heat. And, God, thank you for our churches who care about this community and recently have cleaned up school campuses in preparation for the school year. I pray your blessing upon teachers and administrators and the staff who take on different roles to educate our kids. Be with our kids, give them a curiosity to learn new things and not just settle for generalized answers. Thank you for this council who seeks the best for our community. Bless their decisions and give them the information they need to make wise choices, watch over them, and lead them to correct problems and boldly offer solutions. Keep them humble and anxious to learn as they lead. As always, bless our protectors, our police, firefighters, emergency personnel, health professionals. Guard their health as they guard us, protect them, and keep them from harm. Our best response to your work among us is gratitude, so we give thanks, we acknowledge your blessings. We would ask for more wisdom to help the hurting and broken. God, guide us on how to lift up those struggling, those who live on the streets, those who are lonely without family. God, direct them to your people and your family so your blessings are received by all. Direct this meeting and many others that manage our community. You are worthy of our praise. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Albro, City Manager's report, please.
Couple seconds, get the projectors going. Things fired up. Go to the next slide. Just want to let everybody know that tonight, they had the, hang on a minute, sorry about National Night Out at the El Camino School, I think they're going until 8 o'clock. It's a national event. We didn't pick the first Tuesday of every August, but that's why it lands on the council agenda night, so. But it's free, it's a good opportunity for people to go out and get to meet the fire and police and see what they can provide to us. I wanted to thank them. They got snacks out there, they got bounce house, art, crafts, face painting, music, and I really thank them for putting that together. Next slide. Wanted to let everybody know that the reading challenge has ended, and we're very proud to announce that citizens did 370,000 minutes or 6,100 hours of reading. What I really wanted to thank the library staff for putting that together and keeping our kids' minds rolling during the summer. They were challenged to read 600 minutes by July 31st, and they have prizes and stuff they're giving out, iPad, Stanley Cup, and some Kindle Fire. And everybody that did the challenge got a free book, so thank you, library staff. I also want to let everybody know that we got new bollards and we got new concrete out front here. There's some pretty bad trip hazards we fixed, but they're removable now, so you won't have cracks in the concrete, and I'm going to thank the facilities for putting that together. Also, next slide. Also, if you go outside, you'll notice that we put in some new benches, they look really great, they're going to last a long time. They also match the light poles that we're sticking in, so it's nice to see those improvements around the city hall. Next slide. Tonight's agenda, we have the Cape Seal. Want to let everybody know that be careful out there, we're going to do a lot of concrete work, a lot of cutouts, and there'll be a lot of street work going on, so be careful. On tonight's agenda, I wanted to let everybody know that it was determined that we needed award to the Cape Seal project to get completed while the weather's dry and hot and we can construct it, so I'll just, that's for the consent item. Also, want to let everybody know, this is the last Old Town Market event. It's at the 100th block of South 8th Street from 5 to 8, and the theme, this is Public Safety Week. Next slide, too, we have a cruise night where we'll be on at the same time on Friday from 5 to 8, and then Saturday, we'll be having the car show put on by the Lompoc Police Foundation. They got a great group of people doing that, so I encourage everybody to come on out and participate, and that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Any questions for the city manager? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of three items tonight, 1 through 3. If you would like to speak on any of the items, 1 through 3, you may do so now. Come to the podium for your 3 minutes or call in at 805-875-8201. All items listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the consent calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communications near the end of the meeting. Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on consent calendar and open it to council for either requests, questions, or motion. Councilmember Ayello?
I motion to approve the consent calendar.
Councilmember Ball?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Now, we will have a staff presentation, follow-up report on the 2024 Fourth of July activities and incidents involving fireworks. This will have both our fire chief and our police chief report.
Good evening, council mayor, community. So what you're going to have tonight is a presentation from me on what we experienced on the Fourth of July and the days building up to the Fourth of July, and then I'm going to hand it off to the fire chief to present what we think is the best option for the city moving forward in the future, so. Next slide. All right, so I think it's important for the public and the council to understand that the Lompoc Police Department Patrol Division works a 12-hour shift from 7:00 in the morning until 7:00 at night. There are four squads required for this type of deployment. Each squad will have a supervisor with a corporal and three to five officers based on availability. These squads work a six-month shift, again, 7:00 in the morning till 7:00 at night. On July 4th, this is what our staffing looked like. So day shift had a sergeant, a corporal, three officers, but you can see there were trainee officers assigned to the first two officers. Trainee officers are just learning their jobs at this phase, they really have no authority to do anything independently. Night shift came on, we had a sergeant corporal and five officers, and you can see at the bottom of the slide, we did have two officers working the fireworks detail from 12 to 4. On the Fourth of July, the department handled 257 events in that 24-hour period, so you can see that if you divided that up amongst the number of officers we had working, it was a pretty heavy workload between the 911 calls coming in, the reported fireworks. We don't have the luxury of just saying, oh, it's a fireworks, we're not going on it, or that's just a disturbance call, we have to go to all of them, and we have to prioritize those calls based on the nature of the call. So I broke it down based on each district and what they were experiencing, and when you look at this, this is a heat map based on the addresses that were called into the police department. It's not a specific address, it might be a block, it might be an intersection, and that's how we're able to put this together. So this is District 1, and you can see that the brighter the color, the more calls that came out of that area. District 2, this is what they experienced. 3, you can see that there's some pretty bright areas in District 3 and a larger number of fireworks going off in this area. And this isn't specific to a time, this is for that 24-hour period, I thought it was the best way to kind of represent what we were doing. And then this is District 4. District 4 was pretty busy, and there were a lot of calls going on in that area for fireworks and complaints. And then I put them all together, and this is what the city looked like on the Fourth of July. So you can see there's a lot of activity, and I break it down in numbers for you here. So total calls for service on the Fourth of July last year compared to this year, 141 last year, 257 this year, 82% increase. Fireworks calls, total fireworks calls, Fourth of July, 51 in 23, 136 in 24. For the month from June 1st to July 25th for both years, 324 in 23 and 733 in 24. So you can see, we have really seen a huge increase in fireworks complaints and activities going on in the city. And then you can see our 911 calls, it's just a lot of work, a lot of work. And then I added our staffing, we did have a 30% increase in staffing, but with those kind of numbers, it really isn't going to affect it much. So I wanted to just show you what we experienced and how we compared to last year, and set Chief Fallon up to talk about what we both think is a great idea moving forward, to present to you and the public, and then have you have some input on it. Do you have any questions for me in regards to the stats?
I don't have any questions, I just want to say thank you to your staff and dispatch. I know that the inundation of, you know, 160% increase in calls and the frustration of the community was a lot to deal with, and I know that it wasn't easy because we, you know, are trying to respond to everything and likely didn't make it out to all of it. So these numbers really help explain the frustration in a very physical and data-related way, rather than just what we all knew were high emotions for the evening. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief Martin, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. So I'm going to walk through what we believe collectively is probably our best solution or at least some viable options to help with some, what we would probably call deterrence, honestly. We're not going to be able to mitigate it completely, but we certainly think that there's some options that we can put together for you that would help deter some of the activity. So this is our call data, a little bit different, of course, in comparison to PD. So up there at the top, there are brush fires, 2, dumpster fire, 1, rubbish fire, and outside trash fires, 2. Those are increases from last year, and in fact, the brush fire, there was none last year, there was one this, or two this year, one of which was in the county area that necessitated us to send our new brush engine and a battalion chief to help mitigate. So that was certainly an increase and a toll on staffing in order to help facilitate that. So what is a dangerous firework? Of course, we do a lot of the safe and sane fireworks, the Lompoc Municipal Code references, the Health and Safety Code there in those sections, I won't read this to you entirely, but that is the list of what we deem as dangerous fireworks, and a lot of those are the ones are the aerial fireworks, the ones that move, of course, are much different than the safe and sane fireworks. If you reference it further and go more into, you can reference the fire code, which the state fire marshal defines some of these, and as we see fireworks changing, we move new fireworks into what would be considered a dangerous firework. So some viable solutions to aid in some of the deterrence, we're really, in a sense, copying and pasting from Santa Maria Fire Department. What they're doing in order to combat the use of illegal fireworks, they're hiring really a third party to help with aerial monitoring, and so there's a couple options, you can use a drone option, or you can hire an aircraft to do it. Another option, we'll get more into that here in a second. Another thing that they've done jointly with law enforcement is they've created public safety announcements, and they've coordinated with local media to have those broadcasted both on radio and on television, and that's something that we talked about also, that we can do in preparation for the holiday. So this is really what we believe part of the viable option is for aerial monitoring. The company is called Overwatch Aero, and they're out of solving, and what they do by aerial monitoring is, either by aircraft or the drone, is they'll pinpoint the location so far down to the parcel in which they are finding the issue. They'll basically record that explosion with the parcel through their infrared cameras, and then at the end of their service, they'll provide a report to us as a city, and then we have the option, then of course, of going forward and issuing citations to those individuals. So it's a pretty sophisticated process that can really pinpoint where the issues are in those particular districts or city at large. This is, can you hit play on that, Kristin? Not sure if I can. This is a sample of AeroWatch. This was over Santa Maria just a month ago. So absolutely looks like a war zone, I think that's pretty consistent with what we saw here also in Lompoc. So in that service and hiring AeroWatch, they were able to move to those different parcels and grab those addresses. So what we're proposing is utilize the funding from the past year's fireworks sale in accordance with the Lompoc Municipal Code there, 8.28010. Secure the aerial monitoring service, and that's done through a professional service agreement that will run through legal, of course, and finance to ensure we're all on point. Establish those public safety announcements with law enforcement and fire in early June, and get that messaging out as soon as we can. And then what we can look at, and we'll talk to law enforcement also, is the potential of staffing extra fire department vehicles to assess with some of the monitoring as well on the ground. So here's really the chain, this is what it looks like, so enter into that professional service agreement with AeroWatch, or Overwatch, sorry. It is $2,500 an hour, minimum three-hour coverage, and then there's a one-time $1,250 fee just for the aerial deployment fee. And then, again, utilize the funding from previous year's fireworks sales as outlined in the municipal code to fund that. So just for context, we did ask Santa Maria what that looked like. So last year, they issued 23 citations, it sounded like their recovery was somewhere around 40%. This year, through that service, they were able to issue 63 citations, and they said they believe that they should get most of that recovery. They use a $1,000 fine currently in their fee schedule. So that's what we think would be a viable option, the funding is there and available for us to use that service. Like I said, it's probably an awareness issue and at a minimum a deterrence to let the people know that like to use aerial fireworks, that they will be monitored and fined accordingly if using those. I could answer any questions, if you guys have any?
I think that part of our biggest issue due to our staffing has been the inability to follow through on identifying and fining so that we can have more of a deterrent. We've put higher fines in place, I'm happy to revisit those as well, but I think, given our staffing levels, seeing the results that Santa Maria is at least following through on, I think it's worth considering having this, at least for next year, to see if it works well. I mean, what are your thoughts as far as?
Mayor?
Coverage?
I do want to provide guidance on this, that what would be appropriate is a council request to have this come back for a discussion and direction, because what we have on the agenda is just a report about what happened on the Fourth of July this year, so we shouldn't get into direction about solutions or anything like that. But a council request to bring an item back would be appropriate.
And that will be my request.
Second.
I have a second, can I get a third? Third. So you have direction, and we'd love to see details and a timeframe that you feel would be appropriate, and if adjustments to our fine to help cover that cost are needed. Councilmember Ball?
We just saved 10 minutes because I had a ton of questions, so.
So just before we leave, the police department and the fire department came together and did a training session last week, last Wednesday. We rarely get the opportunity to do this, and this was an active shooter scenario we did at Maple High School. We worked with the school district, they were completely supportive of it. We had volunteers from the high school to help us, we had volunteers from Space Force Base to help us, and what you're going to see is basically a scenario that starts off as an active shooter at a school, and then the subject, the suspect turns into a barricaded suspect, and how the team and the officers work through a situation like that. We have not had, I think our history shows in probably 20 years, we've been able to do something like this, so it was a great opportunity, and we all learned a lot and are going to move forward with what we've learned. But we put a little video together to show you and a little music to back it up, so. So in these situations, what happens is the police department will go in and will try to make it as secure as possible. The first officer in is going to go directly to whatever threat is present, especially if we hear shooting or something going on. If they're the only officer there, they're going to go, that's what's expected of them. As this develops into becomes a bigger, bigger issue and more officers respond in and the fire department starts showing up, they're going to be partnered with police officers who will protect them as they go in to help the victims that are on the ground and get them out to emergency medical staff. So it was, I want to thank my staff and the fire department staff for putting this together because it is a heavy lift, but they put it all together and we're all better for it, so just wanted to share that with you.
I can just say a few quick words also, and in specifics to thanking individuals, Battalion Chief Kevin Shea and Battalion Chief Cody Lee for assisting with that, Lieutenant Brian Dillard, of course, our Lompoc City crews and our Lompoc Police Department, brothers and sisters in law enforcement. Exactly what Chief Martin is saying, it's not an easy lift, this is something that's, it's actually something that is required of us to be able to perform and show up and mitigate, but just because of staffing and limitations, it's just been a long time since we've been able to put this together. So as we do, we look for gaps in public safety and where we can shore up those certain areas. And so just for real quick context, this isn't something that we put together overnight, we've been talking about this really for about a year and what that looked like. So we began discussions in January about what this looked like and how we would coordinate as departments responding. Then we began developing the program to include new EMS skills. So these are skills that are within the scope of practice for our firefighters, but they're new skills, wound packing, chest seals, tourniquets they currently use, but a lot of these are new pieces of equipment that require training. So we facilitated the training over the last several months to ensure that they could respond effectively. And then in April, our two departments got together, started having meetings to communicate what the objectives and the vision of the program would look like, and then, of course, we did the actual drill here just a week ago. But just to, a big deal for us at the fire department as it is for the police department, is any program that we put together has to be legitimized and shored up and have some context and meaning to it. So the vision of this program is to be able to respond as joint departments to a high-threat incident and effectively and efficiently neutralize the threat and provide high-level EMS care, ultimately with definitive care ending at the most appropriate medical facility. Our fire department, we consider it an all-risk agency that responds to and can mitigate any call for emergency service, and this was one of the gaps that we found that we, quite frankly, weren't prepared for. For us, this is a high-risk, low-frequency event that has to be coordinated, as Chief Martin indicated, and it's not one that we will do alone here, just in our city, but it's going to be an entire op area collaboration to pull off something of this magnitude. So looking forward, what we're looking at is probably a twice-a-year training jointly just to continue to keep these skills fresh and alive, and on the fire side, we'll train on these quarterly. So it's a big deal for our city, for both of our agencies to be able to offer a service like this to the community, and so we were certainly happy to be able to share that with you, and can answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you. Councilmember Ayello?
I just want to say thank you. It gives me anxiety and my heart races to see even just that simulation of training done, but I also have always feared today that our community could be somehow traumatized by an incident of that caliber, and so I thank you very much for taking that on and making that happen, and for your pledge to continue to do so for our families and the children that go to our schools. Thank you.
And I also want to thank our school district for partnering with you. I know it's a partnership, and as a community, having spoken last week before the county supervisor's building with our chief about the AMR response, I spoke to the fact that we're an island, and we're often isolated. So the more that we can prepare and respond when we have a need while we wait for that support to show up, we all know it's anywhere from a half hour to an hour away, depending on who it is, what equipment, and what personnel are available. So you making the time and recognizing it despite the staffing levels really is a sign to our community that we're healthier, and we're getting there, so thank you. Councilmember Ball?
I just want to say ditto to all of that, and then just add one thing, in so many different contexts, our city is so much better off when both of your departments are strategic and combine your efforts and align for the good of the people, so this is one great example of that, I look forward to many others. Thank you.
All right, seeing no, we had the bonus presentation outside of the fireworks, so thank you for that. We will now move to oral communications. This is for any item within the city's purvey, but not currently on the agenda. So if there is an agenda item further down that you'd like to speak to, if you can stay and speak then, that would be great. But if there is a city matter that you would like to speak to us about, you have 3 minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. And while we wait to see if anyone calls in, I will remind the public that if you are unable to attend or call in, you may always submit an email to our city clerk by 4:00 PM to be considered public comment on any of our items or general oral communications, and her email address is s_hadon@ci.lompoc.ca.us. Seeing no one rise and no one calling in, we will close oral communications and move on to item number 4, appointments, designation of voting delegates and alternates for the League of California Cities Annual Conference. I will let you know, I've registered and plan to attend, I realize the city manager has registered and plans to attend. Is there anybody else on council who plans to attend? So that provides the opportunity to suggest that I serve as the voting delegate and the city manager as the alternate if there is a motion. Councilmember Ayello?
Suggested motion.
Recommended, okay?
Full second.
Full second, all right. If there aren't any other questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you very much. All right, public hearing, item number 5, adoption of resolution number 6693, parentheses 24, updating the adopted 2024 bail schedule. And where's our, there he is, he's hiding. Lieutenant Chisholm is here to make the presentation.
Good evening. This one's easy. When we compared our list, previous list, with what Data Ticket had, Data Ticket is the company that we use to manage all of our parking fines, they didn't have some, and they had some that weren't necessary. fines. They didn't have some, and they had some that weren't necessary. For example, they had dumping waste was, was not even a parking section. So our newest resolution removes some and adds some parking fines that needed to be under, like abandoned vehicle on the highway, and parking in handicap sections. It's right along the same line as the rest of the ones that we spoke about previously. That's it.
All right. Any questions? All right. Seeing no questions, we'll go to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak on item five, adopting this 2024 bell schedule update, you may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201. Seeing no one call in, and no one rise, we will close public comment on this item, and I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 6693, parentheses 24.
I'll second.
And Councilmember Vega has seconded. If there's no further questions, let's vote. And that passes 5-0. All right. New business, item number six, review of draft electric costs of service study and financial projection report for purposes of discussion, and city council direction for fully developed rate design structure. Ms. Donnelly, for management service director, will give the presentation.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, city council members, members of the public and city staff. I am here to introduce Mr. Mark Boshaw with Utility Financial Solutions. We, in the finance department, meaning in the city, Bob, Brad, and myself have been working with Mr. Boshaw and his colleagues for the past year to year and a half, to conduct the electric cost of service study, and to be followed by the rate study. Tonight, he will be presenting the work we have done so far, and will be asking for input on a few key items. And so it is my honor to introduce Mr. Boshaw to you now.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. And what I'm here to talk about is, actually, probably a couple of years ago, we initially started this electric cost of service study. But then, because wastewater became more of a priority, we did a cost service study on wastewater, and then now we're back on the electric. And of course, in the interim time period, you had a 30% rate increase in electric. And all the data you see here has that 30% rate increase still in it. So I want to make you aware of that. But before I get going, I want to tell you a little bit about my company. We've been around for about 24 years. We started in 2001. And we've done cost, electric, water, wastewater, cost of service studies in 45 states, including Caribbean Islands, islands of Guam, Barbados, Bermuda. We also teach cost of service through the American Public Power Association, American Water Works, and American Gas Association, as well as financial planning. Now, the plan for tonight, as I mentioned, is one of the key things, or in my opinion, most important thing, is the financial projection that we are going to go through. And you're going to see alternative financial projections. And I'm looking for your input. We have four different alternatives for it to consider. And we want your input, and it depends on the capital improvement program, the staffing levels. The other part of it is the cost of service study. What a cost of service study is, is it looks at how much it costs to provide service to each class of customers, then that's compared to the projected revenues from the class. What that does is it gives you the indication of how rates need to move within each rate class. All right. So the second, the two, other two questions I have for council is this. When, 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 what we try to do is to make sure that we don't adversely impact any specific customer or rate class dramatically. And so the cost of service study may see, may show that this rate needs to increase 20%. Well, that's not always practical. So we want to move it slowly over time. So what we ask is what we call a bandwidth around the rate track that you provide to us. What I mean by that is, let's say that you say, let's do a 5% rate increase. That means that the highest rate increase we give any rate class is 7%. And the lowest increase is 3%. And we'd work within that range to achieve your needed revenue requirements. All right, that's the second item. The third item is, right now you have what's called a minimum bill. And a minimum bill says that if somebody doesn't use any electricity, they're going to be charged $5 in one set. All right, that's a minimum bill. There, most all utilities are moving away from that for several reasons. Because there are fixed costs, whether it's electric, water, wastewater, any utility service, there are fixed costs that are invested specifically for each and every customer. And if we don't charge them the appropriate facilities charge, or customer charge, that that initial component, it creates a subsidy between customers. I'm going to give you an example. I'm from Michigan, all right? And I think Michigan is the greatest state to live in for three months of the year. And the, we have about 20% of our population that feel the same way as I do, and they don't, our winters are brutal. So they go down to Florida, probably Southern California, Arizona. And if we don't charge them the appropriate customer charge, the year-round rate payers in Michigan, the ones that have to endure the harsh winters, are subsidizing the seasonal customers. So it becomes a fairness issue. And of course, if the customer charge goes up, that means the energy charges typically come down or are more stable. So, but that's the third item I'm looking for from you tonight. Now, I put this slide in mainly because it's the rate study process. And what this means is, what are the steps to determine what the rate design should be? And the very first one, it's listed up there as financial planning. And you know, there's, what we try to do is determine what's called revenue requirements. And what revenue requirements are, is how much money should be recovered in the rates that we're charging. All right? Now, if that was an exact science, I probably, my job would be really easy, but it's not. All we can do is set and identify, what does the utility need to maintain its financial stability in the short term? So we look at things like debt coverage ratio, which I'll get into, and minimum cash levels, how much the utility needs to maintain at a minimum. Those become our minimum targets. We have to adjust the rates high enough to maintain those minimums. The upper boundary is what we call a target operating income, or optimal operating income. And I want to explain that a little bit more, because a lot of times the perception is that we're a non-for-profit utility, so we don't need to make any money. But the reality of it is, for you to break even, you have to make money. And the reason for that is because if you put an asset in service, say a million-dollar asset with a 20-year life, it gets put on the books, and every year, 50,000 of it gets expensed through depreciation expense. And so at the end of 20 years, theoretically, you have that million dollars. But when we go to replace it, the replacement cost of assets is going to be greater, because every year, the replacement cost increases. So we use a 20-year average of the Handy-Wittman Index. So that becomes our optimal operating income. Now, we don't like to ever exceed that if we, unless we have to. Because if we exceed that optimal operating income, we are then overcharging our customers. All right. So we establish those boundaries, and I'll go through those with you. Then the cost of service study, which I already described, just identifies what it costs to provide service to each class, what the different rate should be, like the customer charge, for example. Those two are completed. Now, we're on the third and the fourth, what's in green. The third consideration, which to me is, involves the city council, because I'm a consultant, I make recommendations. But to me, when it comes to rate designs, they have to reflect what you feel is right for your community. All right? My job is not to tell you what to do. My job is, if you want me to modify what we have recommendations, it's to discuss the positives and the negatives of what you're considering. Okay? It's not to say, this is what you have to do, this is. So that, I want this to be an interaction, a discussion. So please, as I go through this, feel free to ask questions. But the ultimate objective is that in September, ideally, we come back with a rate design for your approval, based on the guidelines that you give us tonight. Okay? So the first thing we do, and like I said, the most important, is the long-term financial projection, that looks at how the utility is going to look over the next five years financially. Do they have enough cash, meeting their bond requirements? Where is that target operating income? Now, whenever you look in the future, you have to make assumptions as to how things are going to change. The first one is inflation. And for purposes of our projections, we assumed a 4% inflation rate for '25 and '26, and then more of a normalized 3% after that. Okay? Then the growth rate, we assume 2% in 2025, and then no growth after that. Purchased power costs, those are the projections from NCPA that we used. Investment income, that's a small amount. But then the capital improvement program. You can see it's 10 million, 18 million, 15, 13, and 12. Now, one of the things when it comes to capital improvement programs, you know, I worked at a utility for 17 years, and being a consultant for, you know, 25 years. So one thing I know when it comes to the engineering department, is everything tends to be front-loaded. In other words, their capital plans are front-loaded. Doesn't mean they don't need to be done. They're just front-loaded from the standpoint that they, they can't finish it all in one year. So I just want to make you aware that those are the projections, but most likely they'll move around. Now, one of the things that comes to a financial projection, there's only one thing I'm certain of, is I'm going to be wrong. All right? I mean, we're usually very close in our projections, in years one, two, and three. But when you get into years four and five, it is built upon a lot of assumptions. And that's why these financial models need to be updated more regularly than like the cost of service study. So now I'm going to get into some details of how this, these assumptions, impact these different financial targets. The first one is debt coverage ratio. Now, debt coverage ratio is something, when you issue debt for the electric department, most of the time, those are what's called revenue bonds. They're different than general obligation bonds, which cities tend to issue. General obligation bonds are secured by the property taxes of the community. All right? And, but revenue bonds are secured from the revenue that's generated from the electric utility. And as part of the bond ordinance, when those debts are issued, is you have to maintain a certain bond covenant. The covenants are usually a 1.2 coverage, or 1.25 coverage. And what that means is you have to generate 20% more cash flow through operations than what your debt service payment is. And if you go below that, you're in technical default in the debt. Of course, that's not good. So we want to make sure you exceed those debt, those bond covenants, and we build in a safety factor. In this situation, we target, for Lompoc, a minimum of about a 1.45 coverage, is what we'd like to see, no lower than that. Look at the blue line. Right now, you are a low-debt utility. You have virtually no debt, but you have a big capital improvement program. So you're in a perfect position to start funding those capital plans. Your system is old, 60% depreciated. So it means you have an old electric system. The average is about 50% depreciated. And although rates are always something that's important, it's nowhere near as important as reliability of the service. You know, I, I probably shouldn't say this here in California, but I'm a Green Bay Packer fan. All right? And let's say by some chance, they were able to get in the Super Bowl next year. And I went home to watch my Packers play in the Super Bowl, and I flipped my light switch on, and it didn't come on. How much would I be willing to pay for the next kilowatt hour to watch my Packers play in the Super Bowl? And of course, that's kind of a personal thing. But the reality of it is, when major storms come through, and municipals, which tend to have more reliable service, usually within hours or minutes, people are back up. But they're across the street, when they're served by an investor-owned utility, they may be out of service for a week. And you ask them how much they would be willing to pay. You have such low electric rates. I know that maybe your customers don't always see that or understand that. But your rates are almost half of what PG&Es are. All right? So the most important thing is that reliability of service. And so the next thing, to make sure that we have money to do the capital improvements, we have to maintain a certain level of cash reserves. The cash reserves that we quantify, again, is a minimum, and it's based upon the working capital needs of the utility. And what I mean by working capital is, the utility bills monthly. So let's say you go all through the month of January, paying for labor, materials, supplies. At the end of the month, you read all the meters, send all the bills out the first week of February. That money's not due until the middle of March. That's a 45-day working capital lag. So you have to keep that in reserves. And we look at things like your O and M expenses, your purchase power costs, and then we also look at a catastrophic event. How much needs to be set aside for a catastrophic event, or for your capital improvement program? When we look at that, your minimum cash is about 6, 7 million. You look at the blue line, you're below it consistently in every year. Matter of fact, you're projected to have negative cash in, well, actually about 2026. All right? This is with a 30% increase, so. This is that upper boundary, that optimal operating income. That red line that you see is what I don't want to exceed. So in other words, I want to make sure I have adequate cash, I meter exceed my debt coverage ratio, but I don't want to exceed the red line in that optimal operating income. All right? And you can see that you're looking at operating losses every year. This is how an accountant looks at it, this slide, on an accrual accounting basis. The other two slides are more cash basis. So this is a summary of kind of what I just went through. This is what we're projected to happen if we don't do anything with rates. Let's first start about four columns over with debt coverage ratio. You're at 2.54. But to fund that capital improvement program, we need to have a series of debt issuances. And so your debt coverage ratio is projected to drop to 1. And so your debt coverage ratio is projected to drop to 1.05, and our minimum is 1.45. And you can see you're falling below 1 after that. Then you have, you go over to the right side, it says projected operational cash balance, and the recommended minimum next to that. So we feel that you need to maintain a minimum of about 5 million. Of course, we want you to be above that. Your projected cash balances for 2025 are 3.2 million. You're in a cash burn situation. So in 2028, you're projected to run out of cash in your electric department. So and the adjusted operating income, which is slightly positive in 2025, is projected to go negative in 2027. So then the question becomes, what kind of plan or what kind of rate track should we develop? And this is where I'm looking for input. And I'm going to run through three additional scenarios. The first one was no adjustments. Now, this one, you have a lot of electrification occurring. And electrification means capital improvements. You have to have staff to do those capital improvements. If you don't have the staff, you're going to pay more through contractors. And so this first scenario says, okay, the staffing. If we added the staff that we feel is needed over a three-year period, in other words, in 2026, we bring in 2.2 million of additional labor and benefits, another 250,000 in 2027, and then 2.7 million in 2028. So in 2028, we'd be fully staffed. In order to meet that staffing plan, do the capital improvements that are needed to beef up the system to help with electrification, we would need a series of three 7% rate adjustments, followed by two 6%. Now, also with these rate adjustments, if you look on the right side, you see cash reserves. You can see that we are above the minimum in each and every year. And obviously, when you develop a rate track like this, and if you have, let's say if your electric bill averages $100 a month, and you have a 5% increase, that's $5. But if your bill's only $50 a month, and you have a 5% increase or a 10% increase, that's $5 a month. And the reason I bring this up is if you look at the table below, on the right-hand side is PG&E's average monthly bill, what it would cost the Lumpok residents if they were served by PG&E, almost $150 a month. And you look in 2025, with that 7% increase, they would be paying $75, $76 a month. And over the five-year period with this series of increases, they're still, you know, roughly 50% less than PG&E. And the average monthly impact is around $5 to $6 a month. So but this is the highest scenario. We have lower scenario, but this is critical because what our plan is, is hopefully after this meeting, to go back and actually do a rate design to meet whatever rate tracks that you want us to do. The second scenario is to do the staffing over a seven-year period. So in other words, we would add somewhere $50,000 in labor and benefits each year until we're fully staffed. By doing this, we're able to bring those 7% adjustments down, down to 5.5% for the first three years, followed by 4%. And of course, with that, we're meeting all of our financial targets. The impacts on a customer, instead of being between $5 and $6, are now roughly around $4, $3.50 to $4 a month. So that's the second scenario. The third scenario, and this is one where we don't do anything with staffing. In other words, we're going to have, and most likely, our capital program will increase because we don't have the staffing to do the work internally. But if we did this scenario and don't add any staffing, then we could get by potentially with a series of 4% adjustments. And you can see we meet all our targets. Debt coverage ratio is kind of a little bit below in '28 and '29, what we like to see it, but we're good with our minimum cash. Now, the impact on the average customer's monthly bill is about $3 in this scenario. So it's $3, $4, or $5, basically, a month. And each scenario, we're able to beef up the system more, depending on the guidance that the council you give us tonight. I want to stop there for a moment before I get into the next section, which is cost of service. Because to me, this is the most important piece that I'm looking for, is the rate track. Normally, I make a recommendation, but in this situation, because you have a lot of variables, and we're looking to design rates for up to five years. So in other words, once you give us this direction, we'll go and design these rates for five years. Hopefully, in an ideal world, we come back in September for approval, and then you're set for the next five years. You don't have to see me again. Is there any input, any questions about what we have?
Councilmember Vega.
Yeah, a couple of questions on the capital improvement part of it. It's discretionary on the city's part because it's a projection, correct? And does it end up, if it's not being spent or it's not identified before we ask for a rate increase, does it turn into reserves?
It would, it would turn into reserves.
So it could be another way of building the reserves by saying we're going to do it, but nothing, they don't have to.
Well...
Because you're saying the cost of service based on lifespan, which means you would probably have to upgrade based on lifespan, but we don't know those, we don't know what that is, you know? So we're basically trusting that the capital improvement increases that are being asked for could be something that's never spent.
Yeah. One of the things that I am pretty certain of, I mean, you're absolutely right. I mean, what I said is, you know, the capital improvement program typically isn't that those projects are needed. It means that they can slip because you can't finish them all in one year. And the reality of it is, without additional staffing, they most likely will slip because you won't be able to complete them. But one of the things, when I started, I talked about the age of your system. It's 60% depreciated. That is on the high end of any electric utility in the country. And its capital investment is probably needed. I'm an accountant, not an engineer, but I can tell by the books that capital investments are needed. And then on top of that, you have electrification. I just want to just touch a little bit, I know, on electrification, because electrification right now, transportation is projected to account for almost 21% of electricity sales by 2050. And of course, in California, you know it better than anybody, the number of people driving electric vehicles. Well, these charging stations, give you an example, Nashville, we do work in Nashville, and of course, being an area with a lot of interstates, Tesla's got a lot of charging stations there. Those charging stations are 300 KW each, those DC fast chargers. So and they have like 10 of them in one location. That's potentially three megawatts of draw on the system. That need, and their distribution system needs to be enhanced to be able to handle that. So and that is why you're seeing a lot of these capital items and the need for staffing. You're kind of ahead of the rest of the country because of the number of AVs that you have.
I appreciate your answers. You're very experienced. I just think on our end, you know, the other end would be a commitment from the city to find out what their plan is. Your job as a consultant is to project increases and stuff, but we're over here with a trust factor, which says, hey, capital improvement, we have 60% lifespan or whatever, but there's no other commitment there. Your job is to get the increases so that they can have the money for the capital improvement projects. But the city has another commitment on their end because capital improvement is something, is kind of a wish list, which basically, they can spend it or they don't have to spend it. Or, as we've experienced sometimes with vehicles, even though we're talking about the utility here, we've had vehicles where, and we don't want to go there, I'm all for upgrading and everything, but we just don't want to have where we have the money, but we're still using old equipment, you know? I just, I just think there's two conversations here. Your job is one conversation, but the city, you know, they can say whatever they want, but it doesn't mean it's going to happen.
It's not time for public comment at the moment. Councilmember Ayello, if Councilmember Vega's done? Okay, Councilmember Ayello.
Unfortunately, I hate to say it, but it's unfortunate that it's that mentality that continues to put Lumpok in a position of vulnerability when we're talking about reliability of service. That requires us to look at capital improvements, and it requires us to look at potential cash influx into our equipment to make sure. And you're right, the demand from the state is going to continue to come down. So it's going to continue to grow. And if we're not ready to at least have some level of plan or some level of capital improvement money available, then we're only damaging our customers. I'm not saying let's go all gung-ho and increase, but I think we've established in this community that we do pay less than our neighbors in the surrounding areas. And so I just don't want to, I don't want to target this information as like, it's just your job to show us the numbers because you have to sell us on the fact that staff wants more money. I think that's disrespectful, and I do apologize, because I think that we need to look at the reliability of service for years to come, beyond five years. Because we might set this in September, but I guarantee you, it's not going to be looked at in five years. It'll be another 30 years before we get to it again, unfortunately, if that's the council's mindset at that time.
Councilmember Ball.
So I certainly agree. And I thank you for the presentation. We definitely have a lot of catch-up. This is just one of the utilities. We're, you know, on average, at least a decade behind a lot of our counterparts. A couple of questions, and again, I think we need to get this right. I think we need to understand that costs go up over time. I think everyone is wrapping their head around that. But I wanted you to speak to, and again, humor me a little bit. You had talked about fixed, you know, there's the measurement of some fixed costs. There's also the projections of some of those volatile costs, you know, things in the commodity market go up and down, that affects something. From my recollection, and again, I know this is, there's a lot of moving pieces, but when we made that jump to add the 30% temporary raise, it was based upon a very serious conversation and fear, based upon the cost. And I'm looking at the chart right now, the BTUs at the time, two, three years ago, that was nine bucks, and now it's at two. The cost of natural gas, and again, I know that's just one piece of it, but that's gone down considerably. So now what I'm hearing is, of course, we need this capital improvement, we still need to raise rates because we got to catch up and pay, but it does seem to me that it's now not that scare about natural gas volatility, it's more about, well, we're just really behind. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Absolutely, I can.
Thank you.
The, I want to give you more of a lengthier answer than maybe I should, but when it comes to markets and the way that they work, be it CalISO, MISO, PG&E, all of them, what the way that they compensate generators is, they pay them energy and they pay them capacity. But they don't pay capacity in that way to what's called baseload generation. Baseload being 24 hours a day, where like nuclear and coal, of course, coal's got to go bye-bye. But so it makes it difficult for these baseload generators to compete. And the reason I bring that up is because prior to all this, one of the things, the tenants on electricity generation was diversity of fuels. You know, be it back in the 80s, for example, nuclear, coal, natural gas, and diesel, and renewables. Alright? And what's happened is, basically, we're down to the most part to three, which is renewables, natural gas, and diesel. So when it comes to the power, you're going to see our markets, which in California, you've had stable markets for so long, and then you saw all of a sudden, this volatility start hitting in the last couple of years. That's happening because of natural gas and the volatility of it, and the fact that you're so, every, the whole country is so much into natural gas. So let's take like the Northeast. Two years ago, the war in Ukraine started. Now, the Northeast has limited natural gas going into that area. And during the winter season, the priority of it is to go to heating before it goes to producing electricity, which they knew that, and it's been that way for years, but they weren't that concerned about it because they would just supplement it with LNG, liquefied natural gas. When the war in Ukraine happened, all of a sudden, Europe wanted the LNG. So the price of LNG skyrocketed. We had increased rates, one utility 40%, another utility almost 50% to get them through. And one of the things that I'm proposing, I hadn't gotten to this yet, is a power cost adjustment, which is, I would probably say, 80% of utilities around the country have it. It's been a little bit behind the eight ball here in California, but we have almost every study we do now, especially with what happened last year or two years ago. There's power cost adjustment put in, MID did it, Palo Alto, there's quite a few different ones. And what that power cost adjustment does is, if power costs go up, customers' bill will rise slowly, and I'll talk about the weaknesses of it. And if they go down, customers' bills go down also. It becomes a pass-through. But a power cost adjustment has to be structured correctly. And what I mean by that is, if that is changed based upon looking only at one month, and then passing it on two months later, what's going to happen is that power costs should be doing this. You don't want that. It's not good for your customers. So what we implement normally is what's called a rolling average. We either use a six-month rolling average or a 12-month rolling average. So what that means is, if any individual month that spikes up, people will see it, but they'll only see like one-sixth of it the next month, and then two-sixths, and so on. So you try to smooth it out, rather than customers being shocked by a substantial increase. But that is one of the things we'll also be proposing for Lumpok, is a power cost adjustment.
Thank you. I think that's a perfect answer, and I'm very curious about some of those methods.
Yeah, sorry about my lengthy response.
Yeah, no, it's very educational. I actually really appreciate that. I think I had one more question. Oh, so, and again, layman's terms, is I try to keep up with where inflation is in CPI reports and numbers. It tends, it trends down, they're hopeful, and it keeps going down. And so again, this is just, we're picking a number, but can you just go over inflation, how you guys choose four versus what the current print is versus any of that?
Now, I first need to explain what the impact is on inflation, how it impacts rates, electric rates. It has a relatively minimal impact. It impacts water and wastewater at a far greater percent than it impacts electric. And the reason for that is the cost structure of electric utilities, you know, 70, 80% of the cost are driven by power supply. So inflation's going to drive the costs associated with the operation of the distribution system, which only accounts for 20 to 25% of the total cost. So if that 4% inflation, you know, it's only affecting labor and material supplies just on that, that individual component. So, you know, it's not like it increases costs totally by 4% in electric, it increases it more like 1. So... So, but the 4% was something, part of the issue is CPI right now is, I think, below 3 or close to it. Electric infrastructure costs, utility costs in general are seeing bigger percentage rises than that. So, and so we use 4% for two years and then 3%. But again, it doesn't, it's not going to have that big of an impact on our study results.
So, thank you. I appreciate that.
My questions aren't so much for our consultant, so Mr. Wilkie may need to jump in on some of this. When we talk about the age of our system and the fact that we haven't modernized it except recently for KV upgrades, finally finishing after starting it in the 1980s, it's getting to the point where we can meet the mandates from the state for electrical vehicles, electrical charging, homes, new homes being built primarily all-electric, that demand on a network, plus those that are already on it choosing to convert and do any of those things. The fact that we're looking at a redundancy and reliability partnership with the base and potentially supporting them and needing additional staff to support base needs that would help us with our reliability and redundancy for 14 days. And then the fact that the recent volatility isn't with natural gas, but it's with excess solar and wind being produced to the point where we have a negative and we're losing money because we can't sell it on the market to recoup. Can you sort of give us an idea that, and reaffirm to council, that the electrical division really does see capital improvements as its highest priority and needs the revenue and the staffing to move forward on these various projects so that council has confidence that as we move forward on one of these rate structures, we're pulling in the amount we need in order to not only build a re, more resilient system for those of us currently, but for, as Councilmember Ayello said, the future and make sure that we aren't failing our partners and our, our future residents that we know are being built and recruited to come. Long question. Kick it to you.
I think I'll answer part of that with a story from a recent NCPA meeting that we both attended. There are some members of NCPA that have begun analyzing what it will cost to electrify their utilities to be able to reach the state mandate of 100% non-emitting power by 2045. There was a presentation by the city of Palo Alto, which is much more affluent, but they're also roughly two times the size as us in the amount of infrastructure and distribution system. So from looking at, from that point of view, their, their analysis shows that they're going to have to spend about $300 million from now until 2045 to get to the point where they can serve all of their customers with electrification, EVs in the home, EVs in commercial areas, more solar on the roof, things like that. So they have to basically rebuild their system to be more, have more capacity to allow for that because having level-two chargers in every new home, which is a requirement, is going to increase significantly the amount of capacity that we have to provide to a new subdivision. And over time, to old subdivisions and old, old portions of the city.
So just to reiterate, Palo Alto is predicting for their community 300 million.
Right. And I just, I also, the reason I walked up here earlier is one, one of the things that's kind of missing on a couple of slides where it talks about capital, a vast majority of the capital that's on this page is going to be debt serviced, and that's why the debt service ratios are important, because a very small amount is going to be funded by ongoing existing rates. So it's not going to be, we'll have rates that will generate $10 million in year one, it's going to be generating $800,000 for that, those capital improvements that are funded by rates. And we'll match the debt service proceeds with the debt that we obtain to build that capital. So they're going to, they're going to match. And we're doing that on purpose because otherwise we would have to have rates that would be able to generate possibly 100, 150 million dollars over those 20 years strictly from rates. And it's because we're matching 30-year life of infrastructure with the 30-year life of the electrification, it makes sense to do it that way because it, it matches the use of those facilities with, when they're built.
And it keeps the rates lower rather than having to have massive jumps in the future to cover that debt service.
It allows us to incrementally move into where we need to go, yes.
Thank you for that. I, I think it was an important part to hear from our staff, the things they're seeing, the demands they're seeing, what our network is going to fail to be able to deliver, and what we're trying to proactively get ahead of and plan for so we have the, the revenue to invest in and make those modernizations. So thank you for that interruption. Any other questions for the consultant before he moves on to the next portion? All right.
I'm, whoops. I'll come back to, whoops, sorry. I'll come back to the rate track again after I get through the cost of service. Now, a cost of service study, as I mentioned, identifies how much it costs to provide service to each class of customers and then compares it to projected rate revenue. The numbers next to that is, you see that like the general service, take domestic service, residential. The cost of providing service to that class is about 20.4 million, projected revenue is 11.6 million, it shows a need for a 76% increase. That's not what's really needed. I got to, I kind of, kind of explained this. You have something called Proposition 26. Prop 26 requires all customer classes to pay the appropriate amount. However, you can apply as city council discretionary revenues however you choose, which is about $15 million of discretionary revenues. So this number, that, that 46.5%, so as they see at the bottom, that's without applying the roughly, you know, maybe it wasn't 15, it was 10 million, the discretionary revenues. Because I think actually, if you look at it with the, applying the discretionary revenue of the increase, it only needs to be 7%, which is what you see on the right. That was a confusing answer, I apologize. I have to show it this way because of the legal requirements. Those are the adjustments that we're looking for. For example, if you said, let's do a 7% rate adjustment, you chose that rate track, that's the higher of the three. The general service, we would probably want to give them something closer to 5%. You know, can remember that bandwidth of plus or minus 2? Where you'd work with, some would see as low as a 5% increase, the highest increase would give us 9%. And that's, if, if you go to the percent change column, what you see is that's about the lowest percent change, other than customer-owned lighting, all right? And that's the reason why we're giving them the lowest increase. And domestic service is 8.6, mobile home parks, 8.6, street lighting, 5.1, customer-owned lighting, 1.3, that's such a small amount. And then general service demand is 7%, pretty much the average. Now, this is what we would probably target if you gave us that 2% bandwidth with the higher of the increases. That makes sense? So if that number was the 5% rate tracks, then residential would probably see something closer to 7 or 6.6. So, but that's the second question, is that bandwidth around the average increase? How much we can move each class closer to the cost of service? Now, a question that was kind of asked earlier about that facilities charge or customer charge, that fixed charge, it is probably one of the least understood charges that a utility has. I remember being in a board meeting at Smod, and one of the customers came in and said that Dunkin' Donuts doesn't charge us to walk through the door. Why do we need a customer charge when they don't have one? And Dunkin' Donuts makes an investment on behalf of the community. I get that. But an electric, water, or wastewater utility makes an investment specifically for every customer they serve. Because if they have a meter installed in their home, the electric utility has the cost to install the meter, the responsibility to repair it, to replace it, to read it every month, to send the customer a bill, and to maintain the service drop. Those are fixed costs that do not vary based on consumption. And that's why utilities have those facility charges. Now, there is one area of that charge that can be controversial, in that we have to have a wire that extends from the substation to the home. Without that wire, we can't give them electricity. But then the question becomes how much of that wire should go into the customer charge or how much into the usage component? And in a cost of service study, what we do is what's called a minimum system analysis. What's the minimum sizing requirements? And the costs associated with that gets put into the facilities or customer charge, and the cost attributable to above the minimum system gets put into the usage component. So those are the fixed charges. And when you look at how that equates to different classes, the residential comes out to about $32. I, I'm telling you, you don't want to go from where you are today to $32. But what we like to do is to start phasing it in, in that direction. So, because the domestic service, the residential are the ones that it affects the most. It can benefit high users and it can impact low users. But it is correct from a cost perspective, okay? So what we would recommend is to start that number at about $10. So $10 a month customer charge, eliminate the minimum bill. Of course, that helps keep the energy rates lower by doing that. But we would implement it for all the different classes. One of the things that's real important is when we do a rate design, one of the things that's critical is if, if you give us that target of a 7% increase and, and we design the rates in a manner that all of a sudden some customers see 20 or 30% rate increases. We, the way we do the, the rate designs, we try to make sure that doesn't happen because we graph out the impacts on customers at different usage levels, so no surprises. I always say, I, I pride myself on the fact I never make the same mistake three times, and I've done that twice. I will not do it again. It's a mess when you do a rate design and you have unexpected things occurring. So we model everything and go through quite an extensive process. So, but that's the second question is, is if you would be open to the implementation of a fixed customer charge and eliminating the minimum bill. These are the next steps. The three things I talked about, the 7% rate design or the 7% rate track for three years, followed by two, hold on, 6%. If you agree with this rate track, we'll go ahead and design the rates. If you wanted something a little bit more in between than where the staffing for the electrification would be over seven years, then it would bring the increase down by about 1.5% to three years, years at 5.5 and two years at 4. And of course, the average monthly impact for residential is about $4 into that. Then the third one is if you don't put the staffing in to let, to build up your system, you still need 4% adjustments. That 4% is needed because the system has gotten behind, and so we have to play catch up. And so that 4% is needed as a base. So what we're talking about above the base to do the staffing is an additional 1.5% under this scenario. Oops, sorry. And an additional 3% under this scenario. Is there any, does anybody have any feeling, want to discuss what they would like us, like to see as far as a rate track?
I would suggest we go to public comment first and then we begin a discussion.
Okay, perfect.
Any further clarity questions before we go to public comment? All right. Seeing none, let's go to public comment on this item. If you would like to speak to what has just been presented to us, so we take it into consideration as we discuss it, you have three minutes. You may either come to the podium or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
Steve Bridge, local residence. When I looked over the study, three things came to mind that you might want to consider as you're making your judgment. One of them is a net, but it's the PG&E rate that they showed, they didn't inflate that at all. So when you were comparing the cost going from 90 cents to $1.30 or whatever it was going, you would have had a corresponding rise in PG&E rates, which would have, excuse me, gone from 1.49 to 2.03 or something, so. The other comment I would have is that, in my experience, I've never had any luck in front-loading staffing. If you try to bring on too many people too quick, you have training issues, it's just, it's never worked out for me, is all I could say there. And the third thing I'd say is we just finished our general plan and all the state mandates, and we talked a lot about mixed juice and trying to get more residential in the inner city or old town. And just as an anecdote, I, I'm helping on a project to put just two apartments in and kind of an office little piece in the old town. And we want to go all-electric because that's the goal. However, we were unable to fully electrify with the design because the old town just didn't have the transformers to, to carry it. So if we, as a city, want to develop old town and put in, you're going to have to include that in your capital improvement thinking, so.
First, I want to say something about encouraging the rate. When the 30% applied through five months ago in town here, it hit my business $500, $6,000 a year I'm losing by increasing the electricity. Plus, whatever I heard now that is going to increase every year. So we're going to look at Lampoke that we are here about our income in town, maybe one day we'll be people paying like maybe 10, 15% of their income just for electricity. So we have to slow down on increasing the, the rate. I know Lampoke, being 22 years in town, we achieve electricity here because it doesn't cost us generating electricity on both underground and distribution in Lampoke. Because we, this is the way Lampoke is more affordable to get electricity. We don't distribute power like RBG and E, Santa Barbara County, for example, they have hundreds of mile directions from one side to another to transfer electricity. And they, they lose a lot of power on the wires, on the cables, plus a lot of work, flooding, brush fire, most of the time that they need a lot of maintenance. City of Lampoke, we didn't have all these things, extra expenses. So I think, City of Lampoke, we need to keep it low electricity and not to keep increasing it because what I'm trying to explain. So please, if you can, take it in consideration.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Ayello.
If we're speaking just about the actual rate tracks and the options that are before the council, I, I would agree that, or it would be my opinion, that a seven-year plan is better. It, it doesn't make sense to go with rate track three because we're not considering any additional staff. It, it doesn't make sense to go with rate track three because we're not considering any additional staffing. And yet we're still seeing a rate increase of four percent. Whereas if we do rate track two, we're spreading it out amongst the seven years with a slightly higher five percent increase on the first three years, as mentioned by the consultant. And then, of course, bringing it down to four percent on the remaining two years. Rate track one doesn't look desirable for me only because it is a seven percent increase from the get-go. And again, it requires us onboarding staff immediately within the first three years. And that could prove to be a challenge for us as a city as well.
I would say that in evaluating all of the projects that we have outstanding and the work that still needs to be done, I agree that the track two is the moderate approach and still helps us generate the debt service that we need to have as well as the staffing that we're going to need to have. I also appreciate the idea of adjusting our fixed cost and eliminating the minimum bill. So I will say, I know that as people move towards solar and as individuals are on fixed incomes, reducing a minimum bill and having a fixed cost that slightly increases as we need to see it adjust might be helpful in that system. So I'd also not only support track two, but recommend bringing back a fixed cost and eliminate minimum bills. Councilmember Starbuck.
Yeah, my faith in consultants, I say. Couple of years ago, we had the same thing done. We took it out fifteen years. And it was true, it worked, it tracked well, what we were told in the graphs. It was actually, we had agreed on too much where we reduced the rates, three percent. And things were still going pretty good. Now, there was a chance here where we should have came back in and maybe did a little adjustment earlier than we did. But suddenly, within a decade, we've raised rates, we cut rates a slight percent, and then we turned around and we raised them thirty percent. So we're starting already with an exceedingly high percentage than what we were told the last time. So we got basically caught with our pants down on that. Okay. I'm kind of in agreement with the fixed meter charge, so to speak. This is something that worked in water, i.e., you're going to raise the rate on a unit of water. People won't use that unit of water. Well, you're, now you've got to charge more for a unit because you're selling less units. And the same thing happens with electricity. So if you do have a small meter charge, that is a good basis. People cannot conserve electricity to the point of breaking the utility. I agree, we do need to do a little bit of an inflation adjustment on this continually. The capital improvement, yeah. I agree with Mr. Bridge's statement. I don't think we should preload for the hiring aspect at this point, you know? It's, why don't we go ahead and pay for our electricity in advance if we're going to take that mode? And just to kind of remind everybody, some of the biggest users of power in the valley are, hey, guess what? Us. Think what this is going to do with wastewater and water. Oh, they don't get to use this electricity for free. So the study you've done, the two eighteen on wastewater, I hope you included all the scenarios here that it's going to cost us to run these plants. I'm not for track two, I would go straight to three and just see how it plays.
Councilmember Ball.
So I'm all for track two. I think that's kind of the moderate approach and that gives us the chance to start planning. And again, plans aren't valuable if you can't plan to staff that plan. So I do think it's vital for us to figure that out. And staffing these days in the electric utility is next to impossible, so I'm very open to that. Something that I just want to bring back that, again, I kind of support the measure two. But you talked about, and I'd love to just learn more about it. And that is having some piece of it, some piece of the rate flexible, attached to the volatility of something. And again, I think it can help the community understand that it's not just us saying, there's a checkbox and a cost, it is what it is. But we are helping to educate that some of these costs are outside of our hands. So that's something I'd be curious about, and if there's other case studies that do that, I'd be curious.
Yeah, I can, I don't know if it's appropriate for me to respond.
Yes.
Because really, what both you were saying is interrelated. The, for example, that thirty percent increase, it occurred because you didn't have that variable mechanism that you had referred to. And obviously, nobody has a crystal ball when it comes to gas prices. And the power cost adjustment will, these rate tracks are going to be more accurate. And the big variable now is the capital plans. Because we've taken away that seventy-five, eighty percent of your cost is going to be a pass-through now. It's going to be a delayed pass-through because we're going to buffer it for customers. But they're going to see, when costs go up, they're going to see increases. When they come down, they'll see decreases. And like I said, probably eighty percent of electric utilities have that, so. And we'll be proposing that, so.
I'm hearing a majority of council say that they would like to see a return of track two and a fixed cost. Any other feedback that we'd like to provide? Any changes? All right, do we need a motion on this or have you had a majority feedback on direction?
I think it'd be good to have a motion.
All right, I will move to have staff return with track two and a fixed cost with elimination of minimum bill presentation brought to us.
I'm going to use a plus or minus two percent variation from that track.
Thank you for any additional information you needed and direction. I'm good without any opposition. Councilmember Ball.
Second, if you need it.
All right, so we have a second on that and let's vote. And that passes three-two, all right. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, item number seven is adoption of resolution number six-six-nine-four, Prince East twenty-four, withdrawing the city-initiated ballot measure entitled the Ken Adam Park Measure, Ordinance seventeen oh nine twenty-four, from the general municipal election to be held on November fifth, twenty twenty-four, and leaving the separate citizen-initiated measure to remain on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four ballot. Mr. Malavi is here once again to have this discussion because I believe we already had it. But now we are revisiting it.
That's correct, mayor. On July sixteenth, we had the very same agenda item on this. Just as a little bit of background, on May twenty-first, the council voted to put a measure on the November fifth, twenty twenty-four ballot to discontinue the public park use of the Ken Adam Park eighty-two acre site in order to allow the consideration of other potential uses of that site. And that's to facilitate the potential Pale Blue Dot Ventures project. During the same period, proponents were gathering signatures in the community to put a citizen-initiated measure on the ballot in November, which would do the same thing, discontinue the public park use of the site in order for other uses to be considered. They qualified with enough signatures to put that on the ballot. And on July second, the council undertook its legal duty to place that item on the ballot. So then there were two, there are currently two measures on the November fifth ballot to discontinue the public park use of the Ken Adam Park site to allow for consideration of other uses. On July sixteenth, we had a agenda item for the council to consider potentially withdrawing the city measure. So that would leave only one measure on the ballot, the citizen measure, to potentially reduce or avoid any voter confusion that would result from having two measures on the ballot. The council decided not to remove the city measure on July sixteenth. So we do today have two measures on the ballot. In the ensuing weeks between that last council meeting and today, I received a request from three council members to call a special meeting tonight to again consider withdrawing the city measure from the ballot. That was council members Ball, Starbuck, and Vega. And under the Brown Act, three council members are allowed to call a special meeting. The city manager decided to, instead of going through all the paperwork to have a special meeting tonight before our regular meeting, just place the item on the regular meeting agenda, which is under his authority as the city manager, to place items on the agenda. So we are here with that decision for council tonight to either decide to withdraw the city measure from the November ballot or to leave the city measure on the November ballot, which would leave, if you leave it on, then there'll be two measures on the ballot. If you withdraw it, then there'll just be one measure, the citizen measure on the ballot. So there's a resolution for withdrawal in the packet and that completes the staff report.
So my first question is, once again, the citizens' measure does not state who might purchase. It leaves it open-ended and any if Pale Blue Dot does not execute on their decision to purchase, it shortcuts any future proposal from potentially having to go back to the ballot and the public vote once again on who might purchase it because it is vague.
You're correct, the citizen measure does not mention Pale Blue Dot. The city measure does mention Pale Blue Dot as the potential purchaser. I guess legal arguments could be made about whether that limits it to Pale Blue Dot. But yes, the city measure mentions Pale Blue Dot as the potential purchaser, the citizen measure does not.
And then the second question, based on the staff report to reiterate, is withdrawal of the city measure is not a project for purposes of SEQA and environmental review is not required. So if they left the city ballot measure on and it was the one that passed, Pale Blue Dot would not have to go through SEQA. But if we pull it off and the citizens' measure stays on and it passes, Pale Blue Dot is affected by SEQA?
No, the, either way, the Pale Blue Dot project will need to do SEQA and do an EIR, either way.
All right.
All this is saying is that withdrawing the city measure from the ballot does not have any environmental impact. So we don't need SEQA for this action tonight.
That's what I thought, but I had somebody ask me, so I thought it was important to get clarity on that. And then it is not costing us, the city, for leaving both measures on because Pale Blue Dot has agreed to pay for any and all related costs, even if it means two ballot measures.
That's correct.
And having two ballot measures might even actually guarantee at least one of them passes. Because only one's on, it might fail.
Both can pass, both can fail. As we all know.
All right, any questions for the city attorney besides mine before we go to public comment on this? Councilmember Ball.
I wrote down a quote that you said, so I just want you to tell me if I'm right or wrong. You said there's two ballot measures essentially, and your quote is, do the same thing.
Well, yes, the two ballot measures both discontinue the public park use of the site so that it can be considered for other uses and can be considered for sale to other non-city parties.
One other question, what group was it that was collecting signatures?
There were three residents of Lompoc that were listed as the proponents who, every ballot measure, if you're out there collecting signatures, it has to have some folks who are the official proponents. And they sign their name to the submission when they get all their signatures and they hand it in to the city clerk. These were three individuals, I have their names right here. Tom Blanco, Evie Skyler, and Heather Bedford.
So the reason I ask that question is, I've talked to several people. And again, with all respect about putting, making sure Pale Blue Dot has their name on the ballot, language or not. And I understand the reasons for that. But I don't think, I've talked to very many people that have not associated Pale Blue Dot with this project. So for me, again, with all respect, I, it's not a lot of folks that don't know that Pale Blue Dot is trying to, to make this project happen. So I don't think we're not being transparent by not having Pale Blue Dot on that ballot measure. And the other thing I just want to say, and again, just thinking out loud, this upcoming ballot is going to be very complex. It's going to have so much stuff on it. And I know from my own experience, or my wife who complains that it takes so long to vote, there's so many different things on there. State has a ballot measure for schools, there's a local school bond, there's so many other things happening that for us as a city to make it even more complex to add one other thing that people have to figure out, is this the same and am I supposed to vote yes, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no? It just makes it complex. So for me, I'm looking for simplicity and that's why I'm pushing for this, to just be a singular ballot measure. But let's see what the public has to say.
Councilmember Ayala.
I'm just perplexed that, that council member Ball, you would say that everyone you've spoken to, unless you've spoken to forty-four thousand residents in this community, I guarantee you, not everybody knows that Pale Blue Dot. A lot, most of, the majority of this community is a working-class community that has their head down and just working sometimes two jobs just to survive. And they're not in tune with the few hundred people that you might know necessarily.
Councilmember Ball.
How many signatures were collected? And what were the parameters for collecting signatures? Could children sign this petition?
No, you have to be a registered voter in Lompoc in order to sign. And there were nineteen ninety-four was the requirement. They, the county verified for us all the way up to two thousand seventeen signatures. There were more than that, but they stopped counting at two thousand seventeen because they figured that's enough.
Out of registered voters in Lompoc.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ayala.
I also want to kind of bring up the fact that this council had years to go over this information over and over and over again. Pale Blue Dot came up here and they requested extensions and they presented their information. The council deliberated and the council delivered what they asked for, which was an opportunity to put it on the ballot. And that, and the council did that. I do feel that it is undermining the council's work that has been done over the years by removing the council's ballot measure, aside from the fact that we all know that the council, that Pale Blue Dot is funding the measure. So why not put their name on it and make sure that everybody in their community understands that? And what I have further problem with also is the fact that this measure was heavily moved and promoted by a former mayor and a desperately aspiring local politician.
All right, if there are no more questions for our city attorney, we will open the floor for public comment. If you would like to speak on this item, item number seven, you may come forward. The number to call in is eight zero five eight seven five eight two zero one.
Up here is a friend, Mr. Frank is not available. He would like me to state that they would appreciate if only one item was on the ballot. Speaking for myself now, I do know that that group worked in good faith for a long time with this city, worked very closely with Jeff on the wording of the ballot. And it's a little disingenuous for us as a community, say, we don't care if they have to pay for it twice. I believe we're talking on the order of tens of thousands of dollars that Pale Blue Dot will pay if both ballots are on the initiative. That's money that won't come into our community. It's money that won't be able to be used to refresh the park, which they're committed to do. And I think just in good faith, the city's worked for a long time on this to get down to this eleventh hour and cost them a bunch of money. I just think that's a little disingenuous, but thank you.
Seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we will close public comment on this item and bring it back to council. Councilmember Ayala.
You know, whatever's going to happen is going to happen and I'm okay with that. I think obviously majority rules, even though this vote has already been taken. Clearly, there's three people in this council that are Clearly, there's three people in this council that are dead-set on making sure that Pale Blue Dot continues to get their way, which is fine. Majority rules. But I do think it's also disingenuous to never have identified your ownership structure in Pale Blue Dot, and the city missed the opportunity to provide the citizens of Lompoc who those investors, and who is part of that ownership structure. So now you're also going to give the community a ballot measure without naming Pale Blue Dot while knowing that that is being funded by them.
And frankly, it's not that the city wants Pale Blue Dot to pay twice as much. Pale Blue Dot could also have chosen to pull its measure off, and pull the citizen measure off, and leave the city measure on. So it's not purposeful. It's just that transparency is key in such a major decision, and there is a lack of transparency for who will be purchasing this on the citizens' measure. All right. Council motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 6690. Oh, that's the wrong one. My apologies. I got the right one. Sorry about that. There we go. Right number here. Okay. Make a motion to adopt resolution number 6694, parentheses 24, withdrawing the city-initiated ballot measure.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded by councilmember Ball. No further discussion, let's vote. And that passes 3-2. All right. Written communications. Madam Clerk, did we have any of those?
No, ma'am. Nothing.
All right. This is your final opportunity for oral communications. If you would like to speak on any matters before the city, anything we've already decided, any future item we should consider, you are welcome to come forward for oral communications at this moment. You may call in at 805-875-8201, or you may come to the podium, and you will have two All right. Seeing no one get up and no one calling in, we will bring it back to council for comments and reports. Councilmember Ball.
Just one. I had the honor of attending the recent charity thing for Santa Barbara County Food Bank, the Empty Bowls. I haven't been for a few years, and it was nice to go back. It was packed. It was good to see the mayor there serving up some delicious soup, and just to see the turnout from the public supporting and from all the people volunteering. It was a really wonderful event, and I enjoyed it tremendously.
Thank you. Councilmember Starbuck.
No reports.
Councilmember Ayala.
So because we're in that timeframe right now where you have to file your paperwork, whether you're going to run or not run, I did make an announcement on my Facebook platform for council page that I will not be seeking reelection. It has been a pleasure and an honor to serve the citizens of Lompoc, the majority that I believe are the ones that aren't necessarily always able to make the meetings and attend, and they rely on the decision-making that happens up here for their livelihood, for their safety, for their families to be able to thrive in our community. I will say, though, that I do hope that someone steps up in District One and that they do run. I have a hard time believing that the people that attacked me and accused me of everything that they could possibly accuse me of, but especially conflict of interest when it came to Pale Blue Dot, those people are now seeking reelection again, and I guarantee you that the rules will not apply to them. And Lompoc, you have the opportunity to step up and serve your community and do it in an honorable manner. Anybody can challenge any position up here and do it the right way, not do it underhandedly. And that is what I think has kept me focused on the citizens of Lompoc, is knowing that I did it for the love of my community, and I thank you guys for the opportunity to have served, and I'll be here until the very last day.
Councilmember Vega.
No reports.
All right. I attended the Northern California Power Agency Legislative Tour, when we bring state and federal staff members that focus on energy to tour our facilities. And then I also attended our regular meeting in Murphy's, where our hydro facility exists, and we toured the area, and we had some of our electric division and our city manager attend, who had not had the opportunity to see that. I also was elected the incoming chair for the organization, starting in September. So I will be holding that position over the next year. So I want to thank NCPA for that vote of confidence. I attended the League of California Channel Counties Dinner, which is the coastal communities between Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo, and it is mayors come together and spend the evening with each other and update on what's going on in the communities and find out how we can support each other on issues at the state level. I participated in the Lompoc Community Benefits Foundation, having its first booth at Old Town Market two weeks ago, educating our community on the opportunity to support the city through a nonprofit arm. I represented the city in the county fire appeal regarding the AMR ambulance, talking about Lompoc's needs in particular. As I said earlier this evening, we are an island, so having a multi-service ambulance response system is vital to us. We are dependent on more than the private provider, who is often not in town, hoping that the county would make sure that was implemented. I attended empty bowls and served, and was very appreciative of everyone who turned out and supported the organization. Not only councilmember Ball was there, but councilmember Ayala did participate. I was very privileged to be invited to have dinner with the Vandenberg Space Force Base leadership, when they hosted the chief master sargent of all of Space Force while he was here last week, as well as attend the Vandenberg Space Force Base Quarterly Awards. I attended LAFCO, the Local Area Formation Committee, which I serve on, and representing the county and my community, and monthly meeting. They hadn't had a meeting in two months, so this was mostly housecleaning and planning for the rest of the year. I welcomed councilmember, councilmember Congressman Carvajal was in town last night doing a town hall. I was invited to introduce him, and I took the opportunity to thank him for all the funding that he has garnered from us, from the federal legislation, for the $9 million that he's gotten us for our airport, to be able to pave it and renew it, as a fault that we could not have afforded, and it is an economic driver and a service that we would not be able to maintain without that. The nearly $5 million he's gotten us for our transportation division as we move forward on electrification and modernization, $900,000 for our Lompoc health system, 1.2 million for Pioneer Park. The list goes on. And then I want to thank our police department, who was present at the event, and for the quick response to some of the outbursts and protests that occurred, and providing a secure environment for elected officials. It's unfortunately getting nasty out there, even at the local level, so thank you for the work you did there. And then last but not least, I attended the first hour of National Night Out that started at 5:00 this evening, and I want to thank the public safety departments for putting that together, working so well together, and making our community safer. We're working towards that, and you two are key to that, your leadership and the departments working together is really showing, and I just want to say thank you. Couple of community announcements that our city manager didn't make. Future for Lompoc Youth is having a teen career fair on September 7 at the Lompoc High School Gym, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:30. Check-in begins at 9:15, and free lunch is provided, and there will be an iPad raffle. If you go to their Facebook page or their Instagram page, there is a QR code, and you can preregister there. The California Army National Guard, 346 Theater Aerial Delivery Company, will be using Vandenberg Space Force Base for its Superhawk DZ aerial training on Friday 9, August 2024, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So you're likely to see an excess of aircraft in the area, but that is why they are here, and they are in partnership with several other divisions from across the U.S. in the area. And last but not least, as mentioned by councilmember Ayala, city council and mayoral positions for District One, District Four, and mayor are up for reelection. The nomination period is open. August 9 is the closing window. It will be that for mayor and for District Four, because the incumbents have filed. The extension for District One will go to August 14, as a result of councilmember Ayala not filing and returning to council. If you'd like more information, you can go to the website, cityoflompoc.com/electionofficial. If you'd like an appointment, call City Hall and talk to Stacy to pull your paperwork. All right. Thank you all for coming out tonight. We will adjourn this meeting until the next Lompoc City Council regular meeting at 6:30 p.m. on August 20, 2024.